Okay, all right. Oh, the microphone sounds loud tonight. I'd like to call to order, wow, I didn't know my own power there. A call to order the special meeting of the governing board, a work session. Let the record show, all board members are present. The time is 6:01. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to explain my vote. I'm going to vote no this evening. I am concerned about us being careful about speaking about the special ed conversation, given the attorney advice that we were given. Special ed RFP, I'm incredibly concerned about special ed and making sure we move forward in the proper direction, but I do have concerns given the advice we received from the attorney. So my vote is no.
All right, so that is for eyes one nay.
Before we start this meeting, could Dr. Finch, just for the people listening at home?
Well, yeah, before we start discussing anything.
Can Dr. Finch, for the people listening at home, can you explain what the attorney has advised on the RFP in the email that you sent us, so they know what Ms. O'Brien's referring to and why we chose to move forward?
Sure. The, Dave Cantalme is our attorney in this area, RFP area. We forwarded him our concerns about it, our questions about it, and the short version is that you can't be the judge and the jury. And how an RFP is written is how you, is the procedure that you have to follow. And so he was very concerned about us discussing it. After talking with him on the phone, you can provide input as long as, as long as it's from the 30,000-foot level in the middle of the process. For example, you can't identify the companies, you can't identify the people that scored, the rubric, those kinds of things, anything that would identify what's happening in the process. So that's kind of how we've approached it. It's, you're going to get a general process explanation, and then an opportunity to provide any more input, things that you would want us to look for as we interview the top two. So Ms. O'Brien is correct that it is shaky ground, but I think if we keep it at the 30,000-foot level, we'll be fine. So I may stop you in the middle, for example, if I think you're wandering off the path.
So based upon our attorney's advice on moving forward tonight, you ran by him what we were intending to discuss, and what Dr. Smith was intending to share with the board, and, and...
He still wasn't excited about it. But he says as long as we keep it as high as you can, and keep it away from specifics, you'll be fine.
So then the discussion really will need to center on process, not individual responses, individual companies, whether we like this or that. It's the process that the district has used to arrive at...
More like an update. This is where we're at, this is what we're doing, this is how we did it, this is the process we used, here's a rubric that we used, that's all legal. But you can't say, for example, Company X received a seven, and these are the five people that did it, and this is what Company X offers versus Y. So it has to be, you can't give specifics.
We won't be discussing individual companies, we won't be discussing credentials, qualifications, ratings for individual companies or raters. We will simply be reviewing, you will be providing information on the process that is being, currently being used to arrive at a conclusion, decision.
Correct. And then what will happen...
Summarize that correctly.
Correct. And then what will happen is the process will continue. You can provide input at this stage of maybe things that you want us to look for, and then as we interview, then we'll bring back a proposal. You can do a thumbs up or a thumbs down at that point, and we can rewrite the RFP and do something different.
I explained, I explained a vote. That was not a discussion item, and so our agenda actually calls for us to talk about the fiscal year 19 budget. So if, if we need further clarification on the attorney's thing, it should be at that time. I really was just clarifying and stating for the record my vote and why I voted that way, so it would be on the record.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. O'Brien. So when we move on to item A, FY '19 budget, we will revisit any questions, clarifications needed for item B when it appears at the proper time on the agenda. Mr. McGlorino.
President Frank, members of the board, Dr. Finch. We have, I want to clarify kind of maybe what I envision the intent of the work session regarding the budget is, and specifically it's related to timelines. So the proposed budget that, and the presentation I'm about to go through, is on the agenda for the regular meeting later this evening, and has already been published in order to meet the timelines to have it approved at the July 10th board meeting. So the intention, as I understand it, of tonight's work session is if we want to make any changes, not to the proposed budget that's on the agenda later for this evening, but to the adopted budget, which is the official document, by the way. The only clarification is we cannot exceed the amount of the proposed budget in what we adopt. So the limit, or the maximum amount, is set from the proposed budget, and then all the publications that need to take place as a result of that. So although we're talking about the proposed budget in the work session here, it is on the agenda as it's created. Now, that's not to say the board couldn't make some sort of adjustments to the proposed budget. I would caution you from trying to do that, and maybe direct us to make adjustments to the adopted budget, because that's the official document anyhow, because we had to publish everything in order to meet the timelines to even have it considered at the only meeting that we have in July, which is July 10th. So with that, I'll go through the presentation unless there's any clarification to that.
I actually have one real quick. It's agendaized that we're just approving to advertise it. You're saying it's already advertised?
It has been sent to them, but it has not been published yet.
Okay.
But the Arizona Republic requires that it was sent to them actually last Thursday, last Friday.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that that is what was on, that's what's on the agenda later, is the approval to advertise.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, I think I'll move forward. And some of this is going to look familiar, because it's much of the same presentation from June 12th, with a couple additions, and, you know, based on the conversation that we had from the last meeting, which was June 12th. But just want to talk a little bit about process, because this is not the first time that we've talked about the budget. We have had a number of conversations in different venues. So with board study sessions, work sessions, executive sessions, new this year, again, as I mentioned previously, the district budget committee met to provide some insight into what the community feels are some of the priorities for our budget. And then, of course, we have the negotiated solutions team, the NST meetings, which are employee groups that provided input into this process as well. Again, we proposed the budget tonight, and then we're scheduled to actually approve the adopted budget, which will be the formal document on July 10th, so we can make changes up until then. I think it's also important to note that we've provided information that includes the gold book, which is the M&amp;O funds of the district, and that has detailed information by school, everything from staffing to discretionary budgets, not only at the schools, but the district departments. That's just the M&amp;O portion of the budget. The actual state forms, and I should clarify, the gold book is our working budget, which includes things like cash accounts that we're going to use to also make sure that we meet needs of the district. But the actual prescribed forms from the Arizona Department of Education, or ADE, that's the actual adopted budget that the board's considering. So those two amounts aren't always the same, because the working budget actually includes some cash accounts that we are using in addition to just what the formula provides for meeting the needs of the district. Hopefully that makes sense. Just some financial priorities that, from those various inputs, salary increase for all employees, maintaining a limited capital funding, so not trying to necessarily increase that, but just maintaining some of the allocations, and then managing our structural deficit, as we've talked previously about, that we have been expending more money than the formula provides for us, using some cash accounts, and having a concerted effort to spend down balances or accumulations of funds that we've had over a number of years. But it's been a strategic decision on our part, knowing that we'd have to sometime wean ourselves from those funds, because they weren't replenishing at the same rate that we were actually expending them from. So just kind of a summary of what's in the gold book, again, our working budget. It does have the M&amp;O override continuing at 15%. There's a 1.8% inflationary increase added to M&amp;O. It does have a current year funding provision. We are projecting a half of a percent reduction in ADM as part of that, but it is a high-stakes affair, because we are funded on how many students we actually will have next year through the 100th day, and that has not obviously been determined as of yet. Hopefully, we will beat the demographers' projection as we did this year, but that is yet to be seen. Teacher experience went up just a tick from 10128 to 10129, and it does include the ongoing Prop 123 funding, sometimes referred to as the statewide number of $50 million, and it's just our share of that. We have the M&amp;O carryforward plugged in at just over $1 million, which was the last M&amp;O report that we were able to share with the governing board. Some of the other highlights include the staffing standard. We talked about this in greater detail last meeting on June 12th, that this is the staffing that was sometimes referred to as plus one, so one student more than what's prescribed in the certified manual. That allows us to staff a little bit tighter in those grade levels, and then with the intent of minimizing any surplus, because they are projections that we're looking at. Doesn't necessarily mean that we won't utilize the correct numbers when we actually reconcile the staffing, it's just allows us to staff a little bit tighter, so we don't have as many surplus opportunities, you know, at the start of the school year. Just a reminder that district additional assistance, which is the means for us to develop, or to receive capital funding, still cut in excess of $10 million, or 65% of the allocation. I mention that for two reasons. One, the cuts is significant. It was more significant in 2017, 18, and previous years. There was a partial restoration for 18, 19, and it's also part of the governor's plan to fully restore that at some point in time. So that would be additional revenue that we can count on over time, not just $10 million in the following year, but over a period of time, we can, if the governor is able to make that happen through the legislative process, that there is an opportunity for us to receive some additional, significant additional money as a result of restoring district additional assistance. We do have the continued cash accounts, so at $2.5 million. That includes the five cash accounts that, that we historically have been using. It's 50% of the available balance within those five cash accounts, that's $2.1 million. The athletic participation fee increase generates about $300,000. That money, when the parking fee was increased, is used to offset additional costs, or not additional costs, to offset costs at the high school for security monitors that was ongoing. So it, I'm sorry, athletic participation fee is $300,000. I'm not even reading my own slides correctly, I apologize. That is the money that's generated to offset the cost of providing those extracurricular activities within our athletic realm, and it's generating about $300,000. That amount was greater, or was expected to be greater in previous years, but actually what we're seeing is an amount much smaller than that. And then the parking fee increases, the $100,000. That was just the increase to parking fees that we're using to offset ongoing costs of providing the security monitors at our high schools. It does include a $400,000 adjacent ways projected budget that is going to be potentially for either a traffic signal on 51st Avenue, if we're able to work through the municipal constraints of requesting a traffic signal there for our exiting buses from our transportation yard, and/or the next modernization project, which we hope to bring back to you at a future meeting, that we move to Hillcrest Middle School to begin the modernization project at that campus for next summer. Net result is we increased the general budget limit from 100, just under $200 million to just over $113.7 million, and that's largely due to the fact that the governor's plan has included not only the inflationary increase, but the governor's plan for increasing teacher salaries, his 20 by, new year 2020 proposal. We did, this slide is different than what we shared in June, on June 12th, in that now we're showing the budget balance remaining being at zero. We have included the four options that were part of the recommendation from even the NST, and I'll go over those on the next slide. But this actually has the details of how we get to spending the $214.5 million in the gold book. Again, there is a difference between the working budget and the actual general budget limit, because of the cash accounts that you see listed on this, on this slide.
Mr. McGlorino, I do have a quick question. So the athletic participation fee, do those fees go directly back to athletics? Or is some of that money used for other purposes? Just for clarification, because I know parents who have students and athletics may be interested to know.
President Frank, they, they offset what have been continuing expenses over years, so they don't add to the athletics, but just the addenda for athletics is somewhere in excess of $1 million, not counting transportation costs or any of the other costs associated with operating athletics. So it's an offset to the expenses that not only do we have every year, but we've had them for other years.
Right. Yeah, so I guess my question is, if I did make it clear, is that it's going to expenses that are directly related to athletics?
Correct. Previously, we took them out of our M&amp;O budget. Now, this helps mitigate the impact to the M&amp;O budget, because we receive these athletic fees from parents.
Okay, and parking fees, if you could review what those fees go directly towards?
Again, those offset the continuing costs of security monitors at our five high schools.
All right, perfect, thank you. Mrs. Fisher?
Mr. McGlorino, we recently have had, or I've had a lot of questions regarding these fees, and the concern is not just that we are charging the fees. We expected $400,000, we're getting $300,000. Is that because we're waiving? Is it a hardship? Is that what the reduction is, because we haven't reduced our sports?
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, I think there are two factors. I think because with all fees, we have the ability to waive if it creates a financial hardship, I think that's probably the larger of the two scenarios. The other is there is a cap, right? So there's a family cap, and so we think that there are probably multi-sport athletes that are contributing to the fact that we're not realizing as much in the fees as we had originally projected.
Then my second question is, are these, these are a small portion of what parents are being expected to pay by the coaches. Has there been any discussion about how that, what that looks like? Is that being put into an auxiliary account, or how is that being managed? And they've actually shown us numbers. In addition to the fee that the district charges, the coach requires X. And there was two concerns, and I'm just wondering, is, are the numbers, I'm assuming they're being held in auxiliary account, which would be standard per fund, but also they've indicated they're not being allowed to use tax credit donation for that. So is that all in here, or?
So several different points there. The fact that they were going to either auxiliary accounts, or maybe a student club account, depending on the sport, that's the money, that is where the money gets deposited. That they wouldn't be able to use tax credits for the fee, that would be incorrect.
That's why I was asking, because it was what a parent had shared, and I just wanted to know that.
Are parents allowed to use tax credit for, say, like camps, like athletic camps? Because I believe parents are being told they can't.
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, it would depend on the specifics of the situation, and we have provided guidance to the schools that comes right from the Department of Revenue as to whether or not it's an allowable activity for it to receive tax credits. So we have an administrative management guideline and all the documentation to provide. There's like six questions that have to be answered as to whether or not it would qualify. So it depends on the circumstances of the, of the particular event.
Okay. The rest of these questions will lead to a different discussion that's not currently on our agenda, so I'll reserve them, I'll send them to you, because I don't, if they're not in the budget, they won't pertain to this item.
Correct, but the, and I think, you know, and I don't disagree with the strategy of, you know, us considering this later, but suffice it to say that there are additional fees beyond the participation fees that we implemented several years ago for the level of the programs that we offer.
And I agree. I know that there's a participation fee, I voted for it, because I think we, I know athletics are expensive. I just want to make sure that we're not overtaxing our parents, or specifically our lower-income parents, and I wanted to make sure we were meeting our obligation to waive fees for them. That was, that's the main thing there. The rest of these questions, I don't think they'll pertain to the budget, so I'll save them, and I'll send them to you, to Dr. Finch, to provide for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Ms. Tweedy, did you have a question?
Yeah. I'm not, I guess I'm not clear, though. Are you not done with your presentation? I was waiting till the end.
No, there's a several, there's a couple more slides.
Okay, I'll wait.
But since we, since I backpedaled to this, I failed to mention, and I apologize, the contingency amount was increased to $550,000. And again, because we're in such a high-stakes affair with current year funding, and that's not just on the average daily membership accounting, it has to do with all of the special ed population, and any of the, any of the ADM that gets fractionalized, whether it's with Westmech programs or online programs, it's called concurrent enrollment. You know, so all of those things are affecting the available resources and the formula that generates the money. So we did increase the contingency amount, I wanted you to be aware. It was $200,000, and we increased it to $550,000. Basically, that zeroed out the budget balance remaining, just so that I bring that to your attention.
Well, then that does kind of go with my question. I was going to ask, how many, how much, is this the money that's set aside in case we need more teachers than we've thought we would need based on enrollment? Where, you say money put aside for additional hiring of teachers, or with our staffing and stuff? Would it come out of this $500,000?
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, this is in addition to the 13 FTE that we have reserved for additional staffing.
So then, on the staffing page, I think one concern I had, it's not showing the ratio for sped staffing, it's just talking about gen ed with our cost of staffing. And you were saying like our cost to our budget with how many third and fourth grade and fifth and sixth grade students? What the, what the cost to our budget would be based on class sizes? Right? Do, where do we have our money accounted for? I guess that's why I'm asking. How, do we have money set aside for additional special ed personnel if we need them?
The 13 FTE are not designated to be either gen ed nor special ed staffing, so they could be all gen ed, they could be all special ed, but we reserve that, those 13 FTE specifically for unknown positions.
And they could be related services?
They could be, correct.
Okay. Okay, I guess my question about staffing of related services I'll bring up later then. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Then we'll let Mr. McGlorino continue. Thank you, Mr. McGlorino.
So just, in terms of adjustments, and these are just, again, kind of highlights, $13 million in salary increases, it's actually in excess of $13 million, which is, I think, significant. It was the one thing that came out of the budget committee, was that they wanted to see significant salary increases. Obviously, the budget committee convened, you know, wrapped up its work back in January and February, just at the start of the calendar year, before we knew anything about the governor's plan. The, it's a 12% increase for certified staff, 10% for other professionals, 7% for classified on average, and then a 4% on average for admin exempt. And we see a slight decrease in teachers, again, that's due to the student decline, slight increase in classified staff of 1.88, full-time equivalency, due to special education paraprofessionals. We do have the salary increase for January 1st of 2018, 2019. I think I had this wrong last time, didn't I?
Yes.
I'm consistent, I'm consistently wrong. I marked it this time, let's see if I can catch it.
Otherwise, we'll be paying them retroactively, and you'll be redoing this entire budget.
Yeah, I know, that would be my penance, right. And then, then we start the four options that we've previously not included, and that's why we had a budget balance when we talked about this last on June 12th. So the full-time district athletic director has been reestablished, the additional school-based administrative support are now included in the budget. We've added nursing as hard-to-fill positions, and we've increased the substitute teacher pay by $5 per day. So essentially, what we like to say is it goes from 85 to 90, but there are a couple different rates, long-term sub and other rates that also would be increased by just $5 per day. So those have all been included in the budget. The contingency was increased slightly, and that zeroed the budget out. So that's kind of where we're at on the staffing changes, or again, highlights, the non-staffing changes. On the health insurance, we're maintaining those rates, so there's no increase to our employees and our employees that elect for dependent coverage. I say this deliberately, because that 1.8, almost 1.9 million creates a gap in the actual cost of the benefit, that if medical inflation continues and there is no change in claims, you can expect that to just about double for next year. So it's going to create a giant funding gap, not only for the district, but for those dependent coverage, those that elect dependent coverage, because we are not representing the actual rates that the actuarial thinks are needed to generate the funds to pay the claims. But again, that decision's already been made, and that, we'll have to contend with that as more becomes known. So that I'm not all doom and gloom, we've had some, and I'm going to knock on some wood, we've had a couple good months of our loss ratio, so let's hope that trend continues. Loss ratio, meaning how the, the amount of claim dollars that we've expended, based on the premium dollars that we've collected, the last couple months have been favorable and have helped drive that number down, meaning that, that the actuarial that was counting on one point, almost 1.9 million, that number would be reduced slightly because of the more recent results that we've seen with the loss ratio. Let's hope that trend continues. State retirement, a small, modest increase from 11.5 to 11.8. I like to remind people, it's kind of like a forced savings account, right? This money is money that goes into an account in your name, and then the district has to match it. So although it does come out of your check, and it would be a larger amount next year than it was in 2017, 18, it still is money that benefits the employee ultimately. Utilities were not increased despite the APS rate changes, the, all the levers that they pulled with rate adjusters that are included, we were expecting an increase, but because of the federal... But because of the federal tax reform, they've actually reestablished some of those rates. So even though they were increases initially with the federal tax form, we think that we will be able to not endure any more expense related to our utility expense, the largest expense being to APS for our electric needs. We did have a slight increase to special education tuition. It's up $150,000. And then the capital budget, which we spoke in greater detail about over the last couple of weeks, is established at $4.8 million, up from $4.4 million for the more recent year of 2017, 18.
So is this, oh, excuse me, special education tuition is at the cost of the private placement? I want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
President Frank, that is correct.
Okay.
Did the rates increase, or the number of students?
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, I believe both.
Okay. Do you have more slides? Should we, okay, we'll carry on. Unless anyone has a burning question.
Maybe two or four more slides.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll go through them quickly. So I've already mentioned this, district additional assistance cut. So hopefully, we'll be able to see that restored over time, as I mentioned. The rest of the slides, I think, are tied to the tax rate. So just in case there is a concern or an interest around this, we are projecting a slight decrease in the primary tax rate, you know, about 10 cents, down to 4.24. But a slight increase on the secondary rate. That's due to our debt payment schedule and the fact that the MNO override, because it's a percentage of the of what we qualify for with the formula, and the formula went up with the increase for salaries, that is being paid for out of the secondary tax rate. So that's projected to be up to about $2.60. On the net, on the average assessed valuation home in the district, that increased up to, that is now $202,000. It's $66 a year. So it's a 7.2% increase. It's $66 if you annualize that over the entire year. Here's all the factors that go into that, and this really gets into a lot of detail. And just in the interest of time, I'll skip this. But here is the actual calculation. So the average is shown here, so 1.3% increase on the tax rate. But most people don't necessarily, aren't as concerned about the tax rate as they are about how much tax they will have to pay. So the average assessed valuation parcel there, you can see the 7.2%, and that works out to be about the $70, whatever, $60 some dollars comparing the 2017 tax to 18. But that's the average, and so it'd be hard to find the average. So I provided four parcels that are actual parcels in our district. And each one of those randomly selected all showed a 7.4% increase, not a 7.2% increase. I think the big difference on the average is any new assessed valuations that are being added help drive down the average from 7.4 to 7.2. I think most of the parcels are going to see somewhere in the neighborhood of about 7.4% of an increase in total tax paid, not just the tax rate itself. We do have to publish the truth in taxation notice. Again, this is one of the things that is part of the publication. And again, this is going to be for either the next modernization project, which we believe to be Hillcrest Middle School and/or a traffic signal on 51st Avenue. And it's slightly less than it was in fiscal year 18 or 2017, 18. It was $1.63 for the year. For that, that's the total tax paid for the $400,000 is $1.63 in the current year. It's down to $1.55. That's because the assessed valuations increased. But this is the actual publication that we're required to publish, and all the way down to the exact font size of the publication. So with that, those are the slides that I have to cover. I don't have anything more to cover for the meeting, the actual meeting itself. We can do the same presentation again, which may not be what anybody wants, but we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do board members have questions?
I just have one. It's actually real simple. On the Budget 411, or on some page, do we have your third from the last, slide 13? Is that out there for our community to see? Because that's one of the things that, that doesn't matter what district you are. You, in the business office, get a flood of phone calls as those tax statements go out. And I think it's important that they see not only the change, but also the change in their assessed valuation, to see that the increase isn't just because of something, it's because of the increase in their property value as well. And I think that's a good sample. Do we have that out there somewhere?
President Frank, Ms. Fisher, it is not, other than we make it available as, it's not on the Budget 411 site, I think is what the question was. But it is part of all the presentations that we do regarding the budget.
Okay. We may want to consider having some kind of a truth in taxation so our community sees exactly what that looks like. And this is the one area that makes everybody very nervous. And I think this is a very good depiction of allowing them to see the logic of of the primary and the secondary rates. That's my opinion.
Thank you, Ms. Fisher. I think that's an excellent suggestion. Mrs. O'Brien, do you have a question?
Yeah, question slash comment, and I would support Mrs. Fisher's comment. And in addition, was trying, I see that we have the Budget Committee information under committees on the committee page. But when you go to our Budget 411, it doesn't appear to be any information from this year. Am I looking in the wrong place? Or where is budget information for fiscal year 19 on our website if somebody wanted to look for it?
President Frank, Ms. O'Brien, I think the only information, the last information that I recall updating on the website was the Budget Committee information, which is from February, I think, is. So nothing any more current than that, other than the information that have, that we've covered at the board meetings, but not on the website itself.
Okay. Dr. Finch, could we talk about, or could executive cabinet talk about having, as we go through this process through the year, I think it important for parents to be able to go to that 411 budget place, or it doesn't matter to me where it's, what it's called, but in a, you know, in a couple of click place on our website, and be able to see what we might have been looking at in February and have it get updated as we go through the process, rather than have to click through our meetings to find out maybe where we talked about a budget? Does that make sense?
Kind of. How about you email me what you're, exactly what you want, and then it might make more sense. I think I know where you're going, but it'd be nice to make sure I nail it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
While you're adding that to your note, can you just add, just for this year, because it's the first year we've had that budget committee, it'd be great to have a link to the videos, but put a disclaimer that the audio, that we had audio issues. Because you can hear you speak, but you can't hear any of the committees speak throughout the, because I tried to watch the budget committees, and you, there was audio concerns. So you may want to have it so that they at least see the efforts that are being made, the transparency that's there. And then, and then, but note that then, and then coming year also, we need to resolve that issue.
Could you email me with that request?
I will.
That'll make sure I'll get it correct.
So it sounds like board members are looking for better communication to the public, as well as a more streamlined process, making it easier for community members to access the information, if I've summarized that correctly. Okay, Ms. Tweedy, do you have questions or comments?
No, I guess my only questions, comments, have we, or do we have a plan for communicating to all the schools? Their responsibility or discretion with the capital and monies that they're receiving versus what the district's going to cover? And also what the staffing looks like to them if the additional admin is approved? Because I think there's, I received emails, I think other board members did too, with people not understanding.
Still early, but I agree with the trail that you're on. So we are going to work on a plan that will do just that. We do it at our, we have a pre-K-12 where all the principals are together. That's a good location to start that discussion. I'm actually more interested in guidelines concept. So rather than trying to remember how we've done it in the past, even though we may be following the same pattern and being consistent, it'd be nice to kind of see guidelines. Because I know you can't put it into thou shalt, but I think we can provide guidelines that will help make the picture a little clearer. So I like the trail that you're on. We have talked about it.
Okay. So just keeping track of the time, Ms. Ordway, did you have a question? Okay, so we're now at, what, 6:40? We do have another topic on our agenda, so is everyone good with moving to the next topic? Okay, I'm not hearing any objections. Mr. Miglerino, thank you very much for your presentation, and I look forward to the sequel. Not just kidding. So that moves us on to item 2B, and I believe that would be Dr. Smith.
Thank you, President Frank, members of the governing board. Tonight, I just wanted to real quickly go through the process that we have already started to execute for the RFP for special education, and make sure you had all that information. And then hopefully, as Dr. Finch said earlier, collect feedback from you for any presentations we have from any of these solicitations. I sent you documents that included the RFP itself, a schedule of our process, plus the rubric we used to score that RFP. Hopefully, on page 19 of the RFP, you saw how we claimed in the RFP we would evaluate each of the solicitations. And it included four steps. It included evaluation of the firm's understanding of the required services, the firm's personal qualifications, the firm's references, and cost. And specifically under cost, it said, while cost is a significant factor in considering the placement of awards, it is not the only factor. The award will not be based on price alone. So those were the four major components that then we developed a rubric around. So each of those were listed in terms of the specific requirements in the RFP. We listed them all out. And then we had a team of nine reviewers review them. And there was a fairly high level of inter-rater reliability with those reviews. Of the top three, each one of those had at least one and up to four of the reviewers saying that was the, that was their highest score. And of the bottom two, one of them had five of the reviewers saying that was the bottom one, and one had four. And then the ones that weren't either green or red, the way I color-coded them, were real close to the bottom or the top also. So we feel fairly confident, if you looked at the range of the ratings from each of the reviewers, that there was a fairly high level of inter-rater reliability. And finally, we came down to, there's two, possibly three, because of some of the items discussed in the solicitation about how much work and logistics would be required by the firm. We wanted to have them come out and present maybe a short 45-minute presentation and maybe 10 minutes of questions, so that we could then be, fully understand the kind of, and be confident about what the firms could do for us, and make a choice after that. I don't know, as we already discussed, how much more detail we can go into. But if you have questions, and then if you would like to give me your input, I'd be glad to capture it.
I have a question.
Okay, Mrs. Ordway.
And I think Dr. Finch, or Scott, or Jim, but my question for you, Dr. Finch, would be, this RFP is being treated no differently than any other RFP. This is the process that we go through for all RFPs, correct?
President Frank, Ms. Ordway-
Typical RFP process.
President Frank, Ms. Ordway, as far as I understand, yes, this is, this is the second one I've participated in the district in the very same process.
Okay, so so far I'm comfortable that we're discussing this. Did you have further questions?
No, I just want to make sure that we're sticking on a very general interpretation of going over this RFP. Because I feel very uncomfortable that we were given the instruction, advice from the attorney, and yet we're still doing it. But if we're only learning about the process and how we're going through it, then I'm comfortable still sitting here. So.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ordway. Mrs. Fisher.
Okay. When the request for this RFP was born, when we just, when we, the board, requested the RFP, it was made clear that we wanted this RFP to be written in such a way that we wanted to actually review what was happening with this. The concern being that we have had significant issues in special education for a long time. The issues have gone unaddressed. They've been brought to light on many different occasions and in many different ways, from parents, from board members, from community members who are concerned about their tax dollars being used for the plethora of lawsuits that we're experiencing. And I believe this board, all members, made it clear that this RFP was to be written a certain way. It was not written that way. It was written in the way which has since retarded our ability to review it. That is why we cannot discuss the actual meat and bones of the RFP. My concern is, in that process, why the decision was made to write the RFP in such a way that the board cannot review it? Essentially, we will be presented with one option. In some circles, one option is something you can vote on. But it's, 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 one option is not an option. It's one required. So I would like to know why the decision was made to counter what the board had requested initially that has got us to this point, where we will now, regardless of what happens, regardless of the score sheets, regardless of how it was reviewed, we have the same, and it's nothing bad about our staff, but it's the same team that reviewed what was happening in special education in the past. Back then, there was a rubber-stamping board that was content to just do whatever they were told. And now, we find ourselves in a situation where we have, go roughly about eight years, possibly 10, of significant special education problems. What? It's very difficult, because we can't actually ask questions about the RFP. So it really, basically, what you're telling us tonight, and I just want to make sure that it's public, is that you will present whomever is decided upon by administration, and this board will have no choice but to accept it or to completely not accept a choice within the RFP. Is that correct?
Correct. I'll answer that question. That is actually how an RFP is set up. That's how all RFPs are set up.
It is not how all RFPs are set up.
I'm just, I'm just going from the attorney's opinion. David McCantelme said that exact scenario, that you can't be the judge and the jury with an RFP. That's how you get in trouble. And so what you do as a board is you set the vision of where we're going, the requirements, the things that you want us to look at.
Board RFP, just like the board RFP to hire a consulting firm.
That's totally different. That's actually written in statute. Now, you're welcome to argue with Dr., with David McCantelme, but I'm just relaying what he told me. And we've had this discussion, and I believe you're incorrect, that a superintendent, hiring a superintendent is totally different and in statute. This is a regular RFP, so that's how the process works. You're the oversight as a board. We are the implementation as administration.
We've done other RFPs, RFPs that were written appropriately.
Correct.
So that board members could actually review. Not just with the superintendent.
You can't do it.
We have. And I've seen many districts do it.
Should have been reported, then.
Well, I, I-
That's how Scottsdale got in trouble. That's exactly how they got in trouble.
See, I really, and I don't appreciate you saying that, especially on camera. Because no, Scottsdale got in trouble because the procurement manager in Scottsdale
Helped, right.
did an RFP, hired her sister.
Correct.
And their board rubber-stamped the decision, the single decision that was brought to them.
Yep.
It was a single item.
You can't have intervention by a board in the middle of an RFP. It's illegal.
We're not talking about in the middle. I'm asking why it was done this way to begin with?
Because that's the legal way to do it.
RFPs can be written a different way.
It can for superintendent, hiring superintendents, you are correct.
And for many other things.
Okay, so I'm just going to interject.
I'm just saying, this is what the attorney says.
So there's not a reason other than it was a choice?
You read the attorney's opinion, yes or no? Is that what it said to you?
The opinion of the, in the middle, yes. The opinion in the middle, and he is correct. In the middle, we cannot change the process. The question wasn't in the middle, is can we change the process? The question is- The question is, why was it written in such a way that it will be presented to the board without zero ability?
Because you can't be the judge and the jury with an RFP.
So, I'm going to interject here for a moment, if I may. So, Dr. Finch, you're saying that it's in state statute, that only, the only RFP that the board can discuss, if I'm understanding you correctly, if I'm misquoting you, then please correct me, is the superintendent serves. So, if that is in statute, then please provide the board with that statute.
You know what we could do?
Correct.
We can, we can slow down this RFP and actually have an executive session with the attorney, if you don't leave on me.
Actually, I think at this point, the best thing to do would be to, and a district can request it, I think we should request an opinion from the Attorney General as to if it is true, and if it is true that a board cannot review any RFPs, what's the purpose of ever putting them before the board? If they're already decided prior to, and I think we need clarity from the Auditor General, if it is in fact true that boards cannot in any way review RFPs.
If we do that.
Because my concern is, I do not want to spend $40,000, $50,000, $60,000, whatever the amount is, for data or information that will not take us to an end goal that we have, that we have, which is fixing our special education department, our special education activities that are causing this district to be sued repeatedly. And more importantly, aside from the lawsuits, the most important factor is the children, and they're the ones that are not receiving what is appropriate education, and that is the concern.
That's your opinion, and you're entitled to that. I don't disagree with you.
So, to circle back to the matter on the agenda, which is the RFP.
Correct.
So, it seems to me that it would be prudent to provide board members with the statute. Possibly, we need either the Attorney General's opinion or legal opinion, I'm not a lawyer myself, to determine what is, what is the correct procedure going forward.
Correct. The negative of...
And I think Ms. Tweedy has, hang on just a second, Dr. Finch. So, Ms. Tweedy?
So, then, two questions I have, two questions I have first. Do we have any idea how long the special ed evaluation will take, when it could possibly begin?
President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, I don't think there's necessarily anywhere in any of the solicitation where I saw the total timeframe, but we're all talking about starting in a period after school starts in the fall. So, you know, we'd probably start, if we could get this process done, it'd be like in a September-ish timeframe. Because they need teachers, and they need students, and they need parents around for a proper evaluation.
When are you anticipating bringing an RFP to the board for approval?
Again, President Frank, Ms. Tweedy, I would anticipate within a couple of weeks after deciding we can move forward with the process.
So, if we, I think what he's saying, if I may add, the more legal advice that we get may slow down the process as to get us, get the machine rolling. So, I don't know if you're given some instruction to keep moving and get the advice, or stop everything, and get the advice. We can do either way. It just slows down the process.
So, to my way of thinking, there's, you know, obviously pros and cons to every decision. So, two ways to look at this is, we stop, slow down the process, slows down our timeline, perhaps more than we would like, to get the legal advice. We move forward without the legal advice, and then risk the potential that at some point down the road, we may be finding ourselves arguing over the validity of the data, or people didn't feel comfortable with the process. I'm not sure that's a good place to be at the end of, at the end of this. And so, I would be interested in hearing other board members' perspective.
I think I'm the one that is most upset that it was written the way it was, because I understand that administration has repeatedly tried to tell the board, your job is to hire a good superintendent, and just sort of port them to do their job and look at nothing. And I think that we've made it clear that that is not this board. So, I think I am the one, I see what has happened as a blatant disrespect of the authority given to this board by the state of Arizona and by the voters of Arizona, or the voters of our district. However, special education cannot go unreviewed. We are so, as, as not only a mom of a special education student, but as, as a member who is in multiple advocacy boards, and I see all the time where parents are saying, honestly, they're saying terrible things about Deer Valley. Don't go there. So, for us just to hold it up for an opinion, we are going to have to get an opinion to know, because going forward, if the, if that, if what Dr. Finch is saying is in fact true, then there is no point for any RFP to ever come before the board, because the board has no authority in it. However...
You have authority to approve or disapprove.
Well, but if, if, if we have no choice but to approve it anyways, then it's not really approving anything. So, that would be a further opinion. However, I don't believe that it would be in the best interest of the district or the children to hold up the process.
So...
So, I would say, do them in tandem, move forward, as well as actually looking at the legality of the RFP process, and some of that is going to be that we have to figure out how to work with the administration, and whether or not the administration feels that this board deserves, this or any future board deserves the respect of a decision that the voters have provided.
So, if I may summarize, Mrs. Fisher, what I'm hearing from you is that you feel it's in the, because we have to provide our staff, the staff with direction, we can't leave them hanging, is to move forward with the current RFP process for special education, but also provide the board clarity going forward, a legal review going forward, so that we...
An executive session.
An executive session on how RFPs going forward can legally be handled.
Well, that would be my opinion, because we can't hold it up. That, again, is just my opinion.
Okay.
It may be that the RFP comes forward, we look at it and say, no, it's just, it's not going to meet the needs of the board, it's not going to meet the needs of the students, the reason we're even doing this to begin with. And then it would be incumbent upon three board members to vote against wasting money on a, something, or saying it's great and voting for it.
Correct. That's how the process is set up.
But for the purposes of tonight's agenda item, do we all feel comfortable as a board directing staff to continue to move forward with the special education RFP? I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the direction we need to give you.
Correct.
Do we, as a board, feel comfortable?
Would I be able to have some comments going way back when I was trying to get your attention to speak? I think that when we started this RFP process or talked about it, the board was asked to give input, however it was given. If you emailed it, you had a meeting, or whatever. So, there's an area where we had input. It's a, it's an opinion of certain board members on the board that prior to this year, last year, each board was a rubber stamping board. I can tell you that when we pay a superintendent and we have experts in their fields, and we're, we give them the direction that we need, the outcomes, what we're looking for for students, I can tell you, if you want to call, listening to what their recommendations are, knowing that they are experts in their field, rubber stamping, fine, continue to do it. I would, I'm not done.
Okay.
I'm not finished, Ms. Frank. So...
And I will give you a chance to finish.
I don't want to be interrupted when I'm trying to finish a thought. I have sat here patiently and waited, and I'm...
Continue, Mrs. Ordway.
It would be awesome. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I so appreciate that.
I don't, I don't really appreciate the sarcasm, and I don't understand why you're directing that to me.
And I'm still speaking.
Please go ahead and finish your, your train of thought.
Thank you, and I'm not distracted easily, so I'll get right back on it. So, I'm going to ask that we continue with the RFP process as it is, and if, as a board, we need to spend more money, which would be great, to understand what a governance position is, what an operation position is, and how RFP, the process works, that's awesome. So, yeah, we can go ahead with the RFP.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Ordway. Is there any further discussion needed? Does the board feel comfortable giving our staff the direction to move forward with the special ed RFP? Ms. Tweedy?
Is it possible to add, into the mic, please? Is it possible to add the exec session for this matter to the July 12th exec?
July 10th.
Or, the one we were discussing today?
July 10th.
July 10th.
Sooner, so we can get that.
It would fall, all fall under legal advice. It would just be two items on that agenda.
Correct.
Because either one was going to be short.
Again, it would be about process questions, not details of the RFP, but from the attorney.
That's fine, just to resolve this matter and move on.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to thank all board members for sharing their perspectives, and I think that is the end of the agenda for this meeting. Can I get a motion to adjourn the work session?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Ordway. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned at 7:01. I know we do, but we need to...